January 3rd, 2020, 2024. 2024 meeting is called to order. Everybody please stand for the prayer. Mr. Godmore, why don't you lead us in prayer tonight? So you're real excited about this. Please come up to the podium.
Can we all bow our heads in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for letting us assemble this night, letting you know that this is our city and you have brought us all together to be able to come and organize, to make our city better, for us to come as not only as just an organization, but a family. Lord, we just ask your strength, we ask your patience, because there's so much for us to do. But we know that as long as we keep you at the head of our lives and at the head of this city, that we will all prevail and we will have prosperity. So in your holy name, we give you and give you the glory and the honor and all the praise, and we say amen.
Thank you. Everybody pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting with a roll call. Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Present.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chisholm.
Present.
And I am here also. Everybody's here. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Everybody in the audience, we had to make a couple of changes. We're eliminating item E, and we're adding two more items. So we're gonna have to move everything after item E on your agenda. We're gonna move those up. So item F is actually item E now. For item M, it's gonna be another request from DPS, Jerome Vivins. And item N is gonna be a matter we discussed in closed session. Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Okay, we have no presentations tonight? Consent agenda?
Some.
Second.
Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Boards and commissions.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I request, and I don't know, Ms. Felicia, may I get a list of, a list?
I have to find it.
Okay, thank you.
You're a well-oiled machine. Okay, any nominations? No previous business, so we'll move on to new business. Item A. All right, before we get into new business, you wanna let everybody know that Denise Champagne passed away this morning. And obviously, you know, she's the director of our Commission on Aging. And a big part of our community's been in that position for 50 years. And she suddenly passed away. So we're gonna have a moment of silence to think about her. Okay. And as soon as we receive arrangements, we will let everybody know. I think he's gonna be at the Rex Center. And her family's making those arrangements, and then we'll share that with the whole community. All right. Now, now we're going to new business. Item A, consider authorizing the director of DPS as a representative of the city to make an application to Wayne County Department of Public Services for a necessary annual permit to occupy the right-of-way of Wayne County roads on behalf of the City of Inkster. To make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for a necessary annual permit to allow temporary closure of certain local county roads for a specified period in accordance with all the general and special conditions of this permit on behalf of the City of Inkster. To make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for a necessary annual permit to occupy the right-of-way of county roads on behalf of the City of Inkster. Consider adopting the attached resolution to be submitted to Wayne County as part of the requirements to submit the permit applications.
So move.
Second. Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Item B, consideration to approve the Election Commission's recommendation for an early voting plan in compliance with the state's early voting statute.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Item C, consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the west of the street between Andover Street and Carlisle Street. And parcel ID number is there. The offer is for $1,000. Yeah, I believe she's here.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta make the motion so we can get into the discussion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the settlement for $1,500.
Counteroffer.
Counteroffer for $1,500.
All right, discussion out. Aplin is here, she can come up and now. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, first of all, it's on the wrong side of the street. We're looking for the property that's on the east side of Isabel.
Not west, okay.
No.
East. Typically, these sized lots sell for $1,500. The council set that as a flat fee. So when people offer less than that amount, they usually give us, they come and try to persuade us that we should sell it for less and give us a reason why we should sell it for less than what we've already agreed upon to sell these lots for.
Okay, so you want me to give you a reason why? Okay, it's been vacant for, since I left home. And that was, what, 40, almost 50 years ago? The lot is not cut. It's very seldom cut. We own the house next door to it. My sister died in 2020, so the house was empty. So we have remodeled the inside of the house. Next year, we plan to do the outside of the house. So the lot is not big enough to build anything on. So we just want the lot so that we can cut the lot and keep the area looking nice, since no one else cuts the lot or gets cut once a year or something.
Well, first of all, we appreciate that. For us to limit is, we probably have six or seven on these today, and all of them are paying $1,500 for a vacant lot. You know, because it's under a certain size. So if we make, if we change the price, because those are valid reasons, because we want you to take care of the property, then we would have to change the price for everybody. And we sold, last two meetings, we sold how many vacant lots for $1,500? So we're trying to stay consistent, so we're not showing favoritism to one person over and up. That's why he made the motion for a counteroffer of $1,500.
Well, wouldn't you prefer the lot to not look like?
Yes.
It's, you know, no good, or, I mean, I mean, wouldn't you prefer that people come into Inkster and look at the place and like, yeah, you know, this is not a bad place? I mean, there is no, there is no school in Inkster. So you're not gonna get too many families moving in. So if someone owned a house, and they're not just going to abandon it, they're gonna keep it up. Wouldn't you wanna do your best to help them out by making sure that the property next door to them is decent? So that they don't say, hey, I'm just gonna let the house go, because the house is, was in our family all this time. And we've never let it look horrible. It's always looked nice. So wouldn't you want to, you know, keep Inkster beautified?
So is that the standard price that's being asked?
The council set those prices years ago. So like, we typically don't try to deviate because we would be negotiating that every land sale. People will come and say, well, look, you know, I've owned this since 1932. You should give it to me for a dollar. And maybe we should, but since they set it at a certain price, we try to keep it, you know?
Let me, let me finish arguing my case.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So the thing is, you want the lot to look raggedy.
That's not what we're saying.
But who's gonna take care of it? Who is gonna take care of it? Because who's been taking care of it?
Oh, we're hoping you take care of it.
Why?
Because you're about to buy it.
Well, if I buy it, then we will take care of it. But no one else is going to buy it because it's not big enough to build on.
We're not disagreeing with you. You haven't said anything that we said it was wrong.
So maybe you should rethink lowering your price, because you got people leaving Inkster. We're trying to keep this area where someone could stay in it. So the thing is, is that if other lots look like this, and you're as a city not taking care of it, shouldn't you go back and rethink maybe your price? Because maybe people would take care of it. Remember, you have no school, so you don't have families rushing in here.
Are you a lawyer?
No, I am not. I'm.
You're doing a good job.
I'm a homeowner, and it just makes reasonable sense. You know, you're trying to get more money for it, but who's gonna pay that when they can't do anything with it?
Oh, I understand.
So I'm counteroffering you guys. Why not drop it down to $1,000?
I love, I love it.
I mean, because we're helping you out. We could abandon the house. And then you have a house and a lot that no one's gonna be interested in.
I'm sorry. Anybody have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chair. I, we understand what you're saying, but we just sold lots two weeks ago for the same price. Now, we bring it, raise it down, lower it for you, then these other applicants is gonna come back, and we're gonna have a whole fiasco. So it's something that they have to change the ordinance in to.
Have to change the policy.
They have to change the policies, but we can't do it tonight for applicant. If that's what he's trying to say.
So what I'm saying, okay, so the people that bought the lot, is it next to their house? Or?
Yes.
And so it's big enough for them to put something on it?
Well, I think some of them just want a big more space for their yards. But they all pay the same price. Whether they wanna put something on it, or they wanted to just cut it and keep it look nice, because it makes their house look nice, they still all pay the same price for it.
So our thing is that we just, we want you to be fair, because we want to keep someone in Inkster. That's, that's what we're working for. We're trying to keep someone in Inkster. We're trying to keep the street that it's on looking halfway decent. That's what we're working for. So can't you work with us?
We understand, but I feel like we have to be fair to the rest of the community as well, and the rest of the people that are equally on the agenda that are gonna purchase it. I think it's at least two others on the agenda that are gonna purchase it for $1,500 as well, and then the people in the past. Like I said, we always talk about lawsuits in the city, but this would be something else that would flood in. So I think to now open a Pandora's box, I think we're all pretty much on the same page regarding.
Well, I think the people that's gonna buy one day, they probably wanna buy it for a $1,000 shoe.
They did, and we countered offered them $1,500, and they paid.
It all goes off the space of your lot, anything.
All right, well, we don't know if we'll get it. We'll just come back to it.
We appreciate, we hear you. We appreciate you coming here and speaking.
But you guys should really rethink that.
We can bring it back up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Item D, consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the west side of Isabel, between Andover Street and Carlisle Street, with the parcel ID number for $1,500.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Okay. The new item E, which is the old F. Consider amending two dates on the 2024 City Council meeting dates.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Can probably move supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Item F, old item G. Consider approval of an offer to purchase one structure located on the east side of Williams, between Pine and Andover, which is legally described as, there's legal description, or 4165 Williams Street in the amount of $1 to CGM Acquisitions. I don't know, why am I missing that word? Acquisition LLC.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve this sale with a six-month guideline, giving the applicant an opportunity to come before us if they need an extension to demolish it.
Do we get a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Mr. Chair, just for purposes, will you explain?
Oh, sure.
Why we're selling it for a dollar?
This was a building that caught on fire, a house, and the developer asked to buy it for $1, and he'll incur all of the demolition costs, which are pretty substantial. So he's gonna demolish it, and then, I'm not sure what he's gonna do with it next, but hopefully develop it. Okay. Well, now we go to item G, which is old item H. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on Stanford Street, on the north side of the street, between John Daly and Beach Daly Streets. Parcel ID number for $1,500.
Move for approval.
Second. Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Item H, old item I. Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel. The parcel is located on the north side of Stanford Street, between John Daly Street and Bayham Street, with the parcel ID for $1,500.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Probably move and support it, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? It passes. Item I, old item J. Consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels. Both parcels are located on Beach Nut, on the north side of the street, between Cherry Hill Street and Avondale Street. Parcel ID for $3,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Item J, consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels. The two parcels are located on the west side of Ross Street, between Andover Street and Carlisle Street, with the parcel ID number for $3,000.
Some.
Second.
Can probably move to second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, item K, old item L. Consider approval of an offer to purchase five vacant parcels located on the east side of Huck Court, between Michigan Ave and Kurtzle, which is legally described as, and there's a long legal description, and two vacant parcels located on the north side of Kurtzle, between Huck Court and Inkster Road. And there's a long legal description for that. Or Kurtzle Street in the amount of $7,000 to Strategic Alliance CDC. Is there a motion?
Motion for discussion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. So probably move to second, discussion?
I think we just wanna know ultimately what they plan on doing with the property.
For those in the audience, the property is the parking lot behind, on the east west corner of Inkster Road and Michigan Avenue, on the north side of the street. There's several buildings, starting with the early bird, Coney Island. It's been closed for years. Goes all the way down to used to be the Inkster Pharmacy, I believe, the beauty shop. Behind that, the city owns all those parking lots. It's, the parking lot, it needs some renovation. Concrete is messed up, but it's the parking for all those businesses. And I don't think any of those businesses are open currently. So someone offered to buy the parking lot to the businesses.
Mr. Chair, one of those is part of that, one of those parcels is part of Kurtzle Street as well.
Right, which is actually a street that the city owns, of course. So if we sell the parking lot, I think it would make the buildings on Michigan Avenue worthless, because there would be no parking. You can't park on Michigan Avenue. So the only thing you could park on would be Kurtzle and those other stuff.
No, that's Kurtzle.
Huck and, you know, and that's not viable if you're gonna have five or six businesses there. So that's what we're discussing right now.
So, Mr. Chair, should I just take my motion off the table and just table this?
No, no, you can keep your motion on. I mean, I guess the motion's not asking us to do anything. That's, maybe you amend it?
Amend it to have, have this applicant come in and explain to us?
The reason why we're saying this, the applicant also purchased Old City Hall. And I think he's trying to buy these lots in conjunction with something he's doing at the Old City Hall. So we don't have to connect the two. They're, they're two separate properties. So we can vote yes or no. If he comes in and says, hey, I'm putting Disney World here, and I need these lots, and we say yay, because, you know, we're gonna get a lot of tax money, we can, he can always offer to purchase them again, you know, even if we denied it tonight. But right now, I haven't heard a good reason to sell him the parking in loan. And maybe he comes and he buys the whole strip of buildings on Michigan Avenue. Who knows? Then it maybe it makes sense. But right now, you know, I think if we sold them, we would be putting ourselves in a bad situation for further development. So I think we has two questions. We certainly want him to come in and present us where he's at with his project that was already approved, the sale of Old City Hall. But I don't know if we should tie these spots to that. That's up to this body. I don't think we should. We can make a motion on these, no? But we need to, but we need to have something to vote on. Are we voting it down, or we voting it yes?
Can we, can we table this and, and bring it up and find out exactly what's going on, so we know where we're going with this?
But I also think, but I also think to table it, like when, I think we all kind of agree, well, majority of us agree.
No, you vote.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we can table it, but ultimately, also the reason he stated in the packet as to what his reason was for, like, the operation of the parking lot, and it's to do more training camp. So I think that's gonna open other issues as well, besides the parking for.
He wants it used as a training facility. But Mr. Daddell, can you explain better?
Yeah. I can try. My understanding is fiber optics is what he's gonna try to train residents to learn how to do things of that nature. So that involves, you know, digging up holes and things of that nature. But I can't give you any more detail than, it'd be strictly speculation as to what he, that is consistent of.
Okay, so on that note, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna amend mine to say that we table it and have him come in to let us know. I mean, because we can vote it up, we can vote it down. But if we vote it down, I still, we don't have all the information we need to even make a decision on this, act to me. So I think I would.
I would statement, we're already putting forward a motion for him to come in for what's being done at City Hall, correct? We're gonna ask him.
We're gonna ask him.
I mean, not a motion.
But we need more clarity of what he's gonna, his intentions was on these lots that he's trying to buy tonight. But he was saying that it was for some use, but he really wasn't clear to what he was doing. So in that note, I would, just to be fair, I would have him, we still gotta, we still either gonna vote yea or nay, but it's gonna be two weeks from now to the next council meeting. So if I amend my, my motion to have it table until he comes in Tuesday, I mean, you know, comes in and give us a presentation.
Is the real estate person?
Nobody's here.
No.
See, that's what I'm saying, is nobody's here. So just to be fair.
I think we can vote on it, but I also, I think we have to think also about the businesses, the businesses that are already purchased that'll ultimately impact as well.
Right. But I would also like to give him a chance to tell us what he's doing. So I'm gonna amend my motion to tables. And if I get a second, I mean, if you guys, you know, vote the way you want.
All right, the motion's been amended to table this matter, okay? So all those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I think it fails.
Yeah, okay.
So is there a motion, despite, despite this motion, to vote it up or vote it down? I'll put forth a motion to vote it down. And the reason for that is because when he comes in to present for us for City Hall, this can always be brought up back for topic. We don't necessarily have to table this. It can be done either way. It's gonna come back.
Second.
All right. It's been properly, discussion?
Yes, discussion. Just for clarity, okay. So I was looking at the RSCA, and it says Strategic Alliance CDC would like to purchase the land to use for training to work in conjunction with the fiber optics project and under construction charging station located 2121 Inkster Road, Inkster, Michigan, 4141. When you all were discussing this, it gave me further insight. Another thing we didn't consider is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 residents that live right there on that street, depending on what all that is with heavy machinery and with it being in the TCD. If they're doing, I'm sorry, yes, if they're doing fiber optics project and they're looking at the heavy machinery to bore and stuff like that, will that one fit in the vision of the TCD? And then two, how does that actually impact those residents that particularly live right there as well? And I know there's retaining pine over there. You got the state of Michigan, all that stuff over there, too. I know, once this we get to plan it or something like that, we'd go through all those particular motions, but I just don't see that being applicable with those businesses that are there, those residents that are right there, and whatever particular emergency traffic goes back and forth to DPS, all that good stuff.
And the charging stations, that's why this one came to come in, because we don't, we didn't have anything about the charging stations. What is that?
Right, I remember, I was asked about that earlier, so. That, that was just my two bits on that, because it got confusing. But, oh, I wanted clarity on this. When, I know the motion was there for discussion, then we motioned about tabling it, and then we just talked about voting it down. When we vote this down, and motion to deny, and it comes back to us, it can't come back to us the exact same way, can it?
Right, no, it can't, it has to come back a certain, different kind of way.
Well, I mean, can't come, you mean for the same price?
No, it's got, the wording gotta be different, I think. The wording has to be different. It can't come back exactly like this.
Oh, the price?
The price can stay the same, but the wording has to be different to come back. If you voted down, if he brings it back, he has to change something in this, this paragraph that he has.
And that was a thing, too, that was pointed out earlier, is the pricing, because it's in the TCD, and they're offering $1,000 per parcel versus it being in the TCD.
So it should be higher, that's what I was, yeah.
Why?
I mean, you would think, before you even purchase this, before we even sell it, that you almost have to go through planning for us to see if we're allowed. They have to come back to us anyway. So before we sell this, let's see if we're gonna allow him to do what he wants to do. If not, then this is all moot, you know?
How, how did he purchase it?
Well, he could, he could go through.
He had a real estate, he had, he had, who signed this? Pardon? Who signed for, yeah, I just wanna know for his City of Inkster purchase agreement, what, who did he use?
My real estate?
Yeah.
It's Curtisine Barge.
Curtisine Barge.
Standard PA.
I guess my question would be, because it's a land purchase, it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily be like a special land use or something of that nature, which would.
I'm saying the use, though, because it's in the TCD, you're gonna do certain things. We may not allow, I'm pretty sure we will not allow a training ground unless.
I believe we do have something about a school, which would technically, it's certain now, but.
Is that indoor or outdoor, though? Because with boring and fiber optics, if it's indoor and you're splicing it, and I'm only speaking from my own personal knowledge, with splicing and learning and everything like that, you could be indoors. But when you're using the machinery and when the emissions and all that is given off, that's outside.
I understand. I mean, but I was just playing devil's advocate on what the.
But that should go, that should go to the planning commission, let them consider it, then come to us, if that's what he intends to do.
That's fine.
I think. So any other discussion? So now the motion on the floor is to deny, correct?
A roll call motion.
You're gonna do a roll call? Okay. All right, we're gonna do a roll call, huh? Okay. Councilwoman Rutledge.
Nay.
Councilman Bishop. Are we voting? To deny it?
To deny it? Oh, yea, to deny.
Okay. Also, you're voting yea?
Yeah, yea, to deny.
Councilwoman Rutledge voted yea to deny. Councilman Bishop, yea. Councilwoman Scott?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Howard?
Aye, to, well. I'm not trying to vote this down, so what am I?
Say nay. Councilwoman Richardson?
Nay.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
We have four yae's, so it passes.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Motion is granted to deny. All right, we got item M, which is, uh, another request from D, D P S. Uh, a request and authorization be given to Director of D P S as a representative of the city to make an application to the Michigan Department of Transportation for necessary annual permit to work within the state trunk line right of way behalf, on behalf of the city of Inkster. Also consider adopting the attached resolution to be submitted to M dot as a part of the requirement to submit the permit application.
Some of this chair.
They probably moved to supportive discussion. Do anybody need an explanation from our beloved D P S director?
Beloved.
He has a lot of power.
A lot of money too.
Yeah, a lot of money. I'm not mad at him right now. Okay. All right, so we already go? Okay. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Our last item, item N. To vote in accordance with the vote taken in closed session regarding shebaas.
Some of.
Second.
And probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? It passes. Public participation. Did you fill out one each? You, you can still talk, I mean.
And, uh, City Council, I just wanna thank you for listening to our counter and, uh, giving us a chance to express.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate you. Melvin Gatewood. Good evening, Mr. Gatewood.
Okay, we're back again with God's Work Our Hands and the building located at the corner of, uh, John Daley and, uh, Crowbridge. We have done everything you requested us to do. We put the, uh, good faith money forward and all the paperwork should be in. And so, again, we're asking your approval.
You receive it? It'll be on the next council meeting's agenda. We had to do, because we cl- shut down for two weeks, this agenda was prepared, I think, December twentieth, right? So, I don't know when, when he paid the money.
The deadline was, was, uh, that passed.
Okay. The deadline is typically that Wednesday?
Well, I, when I, when we spoke last, you said to give it to the gentleman, which we did the following day.
Oh, did?
I don't think, uh, no, I know what it is. I'm sorry. We did not have that, all the information. They did come pay for the, the thing, but, but the documents weren't sent to me from the, the Realtor.
Oh, okay. Uh, what, that's purchase agreement and all that?
Uh, so it was incomplete. So, I was, when they sent it to me, which was on the twenty second, I believe, it's twenty first was at twelve o'clock was when it was due.
Right. Okay. All right. So, unfortunately, he didn't have all the paperwork to put it on this agenda.
But I, I had the paperwork at the time.
But what, did, did you give it, who did you give it to?
I offered the paperwork to him. I was also, and I was told that the paperwork had already been turned in.
You mean the purchase agreement?
I beg your pardon?
Paperwork, you.
Purchase agreement had all, uh, I don't know the lady's last name, first name Peggy, last name?
Jordan.
Yes.
But remember when, when you handed me the information, I said, I'm gonna try to get it on this agenda. I said, but if not, it would be on the next meeting in January.
You said we were in the pipeline.
Right.
That was your words.
I was gonna try to get you in, on here.
Mr. Gate, Gatewood, we apologize. It probably should've had, happened a little smoother than that, and you've been here several times, so I acknowledge that. But we will definitely, we're putting you on the agenda right now for the next meeting. You'll be item A.
It's already written up, sir.
Okay, it's ready to go. Okay. You will be on the next agenda, please, okay?
All right, thank you very much. Thank you again.
Sandra Watley. She got a speech. Yeah, get, get her time a moment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to talk about the air quality in Inkster. Um, I have, uh, contacted the E P A, the C D C. I've gone over the Clean Air Act, and I've also gone over the stipulations that we give when these marijuana establishments open. One of those is smoke, fume, glare, noise, vibrations, and odor pollution. There will be none of that. We all know that's a lie right now, right? I mean, does anybody disagree with me that we can smell marijuana the minute you step outside your door? We are exposing our children to that. And I have also gotten from the C D C that, uh, marijuana smoke, secondhand marijuana smoke, contains many of the same toxic and cancer-causing chemicals found in tobacco smoke and conca- and contains some of those chemicals in higher amounts. But we've got eight facilities spewing this stuff in the air, and our children are sucking it up. I've also found that it has a cumulative impact on certain societies. It says population vulnerabilities are related to social determinants of health, which the Center of Disease Control and Prevention defines as conditions in which people are born, grow, live, work, and age, as well as the complex interrelated social structures of economic systems that shape these conditions. These examples are discrimination, income, housing, transportation, availability, and health services. Now, the first line in most of our ordinances start off with to protect human health and the environment. We are not doing that with these marijuana facilities. Now, they've used number five in these, uh, criteria for opening as a mechanism for getting that license. And I think that you as a council ought to use these same things that allowed them to get this license to revoke these licenses, because our air, we're killing our kids is what we're doing. They're, we're poisoning the air, and this is just what we have now. We have no idea what these people use to grow this stuff, what kind of fertilizer, what kind of pesticides, any of that stuff that is in the air. But we do know we're sniffing it every day. So, I, uh, attended the planning commission meeting, and I spoke with you, and I believe we decided on something that we could do via the state to bring people in to, uh, do this, because at some point, we have to stop allowing anything to come into our city and then just sitting here and accepting it while we suffer. This is our community. We get to do, we get to decide. And so, I'm asking the council at this point for you all to decide to join with planning and, uh, push this forward. I want people to come down here. Please, don't make me go to Channel Four. Remember Karen, what's her name? And she says, it stinks in Adrian. Well, we're gonna have a show that says it stinks in Inkster shitty soon if we don't do something about this. So, I'm thinking these same mechanisms that are used to approve these licenses should be used to revoke them if they can't clean up their act, and they're not at this point. And you gotta remember, you got a couple more of these coming online. The one that's supposed to be being built right next door to us? Yeah, that's coming. And I don't know if Abe's over there, the track is open for business yet. See, so, we're already suffocating, and now we're, uh, looking to suffocate more. So, I am saying that this council needs to do the, something about it. And me as a citizen, or I as a citizen, how does that go? But anyway, uh, whatever happens up there should be the will of the people out here. And the will of the people out here is to clean up our air now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hanif Sabri.
Good evening, Mayor Nolan.
Good evening.
Uh, the council and city officials. For those who do not know, my name is Hanif Sabri. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Inkster, and I represent, uh, J R H and Sons L L C, which is a family business. And the focal point is community development. Uh, with that, the overall objective is to revitalize and to restore the community. So, currently, we are working on a project where we have a section of land on Harrison between Beech and Carlisle, and the name of the project is called the Reinvent Harrison Project. Before I get into my main reason for being here this evening, it's imperative that I just touch on my mindset as it relates to the city of Inkster. And with that, any actions basically that are positive, that support the growth of the city, for example, uh, upgrades with the infrastructure, uh, measures that serve as a benefit, especially for the long-time residents, I support one hundred percent. However, unfortunately, various, uh, companies are working on the access on Harrison that runs adjacent to the property that we own, and they have shown a complete disregard for the land. I have a letter in front of me that I would like to read, but before I do that, it's important that I just touch on a couple points. I do have a physical copy of the letter from Mayor Nolan, uh, Mr. Jones, and I emailed an actual, uh, copy of the letter to the city council. I also have some pictures that show the destruction that has taken place. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that earlier this year, as relates to the Reinvent Harrison Project, I did have, uh, through networking and collaboration, I received onsite consultation from two black farmers. Uh, one is located in the Willa Run, Isalani area, and he represents an organization called Willa Run Acres. Uh, the second black farmer is located in the Sumpter area. Now, the purpose of the consultation was to, uh, basically enhance the agricultural component of the Reinvent Harrison Project. But with the companies that I mentioned, with the destructive and negative activity that has taken place, that basically has worked to undermine and unravel just, uh, a lot of the hard work and dedication that were pouring into the Reinvent Harrison Project. Uh, so, Mayor Nolan, before I read the letter, I just want to know if I could approach to give you the documentation and the pictures. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, moving right along, the letter reads as follows. From July two thousand twenty-three to now, uh, numerous companies have been abusing and defacing our property as work is conducted along the access on Harrison Street. Some of the companies observed our D T E, Asplon, Davy Tree, I P R Great Lakes, and Giffords Webster. Uh, please see the additional documentation regarding D T E. Uh, Giffords Webster is the latest company I've witnessed on our property. There's been a complete disregard for our land on Harrison Street in Inkster between thirty-five zero eight and thirty-six four six Harrison. Since Giffords Webster took over operations, the treatment and consideration of land in question has become progressively worse. Speaking with the construction inspector Mirage has been unproductive. The markers denoting the property lines on the west side, for example, the irons, wood stakes, four-by-fours, et cetera, have either been removed or infringed upon. The extensive harm to the property is clear and evident. A section of fencing on the south end of the property was removed, a large decorative pot crushed, a no trespassing sign demolished, a fire pit that was built by hand has been dismantled, three rain gardens destroyed, a vegetable garden eliminated, a bush has been decimated, and a wood stand with wood taken from the premises. There's evidence that heavy equipment rolled over a section of wood chips, which are for the enclosed community garden, as if it were never there. Huge piles of trees, shrubs, and building material have been sitting on the property for weeks. Areas where grass once existed now resemble dirt paths. Large tire tracks are sprawled carelessly throughout the property off of Harrison Street, indicating my repeated request to not overuse the land has been dismissed. The construction inspector was made aware of two access points off of Carlisle Harriet Street that would have helped to prevent these problems. Photographs are available upon request to verify the statements. J R H and Sons L L C is committed to the Reinvent Harrison Project at the said location. A lot of time, money, and resources have been dedicated to restoring Harrison Street in Inkster. Unprofessionalism, gross negligence, and total disrespect by the responsible parties is highly inappropriate and unacceptable. Your assistance in rectifying these con- excuse me, your assistance in rectifying these concerns would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Question, have you received any, um, reply to your complaints from D T? I see you listed them here. Have they responded at all?
So, with a separate letter through, basically reaching out to the executive, uh, basically offices in Detroit, I finally got a response. I don't remember the lady's name right off, but she had apologized, because it took quite a while before I even received a response. I went through a number of channels, kept getting a runaround, but eventually Councilman Bishop, they removed the poles and actually installed them, but they were just sitting, just on the land, just like for months before they actually made a move on it. Yeah, appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Problem, thank you for your time.
Jesse Shelby.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
I came for two things, but it's gonna turn into three. And the reason is, is, um, God work our hands. They was told to be here tonight, and you will make a decision. They took the money the next day. They had the money here that night, and the person they supposed to give it to had left. So, when they got there the next day to give them the money, the application of all the information that they had had the night before had disappeared. So, why is it that tonight whoever got the money, they give it to council so you can see all the information before tonight? So, your workers need to get better on doing what they need to do, because this is wrong. They are waiting. I have things here from Marilyn saying, if anybody needs some food to pass it out, they make an appointment and she will make sure they get the food, because tonight they thought they was gonna get the building so they can get everything else. So, that's, I don't know what to say after that, because they, they really, your workers should have passed the information so when you went into closed session tonight, you would've had it. Okay, the other thing is, I'm getting phone calls about the leaves. You know, we had a nice winter. We haven't had any snow, and people are putting the leaves out. And I told them, I don't work for the city, but I will come to council meeting and get an answer. My thing is, I thought it's a certain time of the year that we stop picking up leaves, and we used to have a calendar that told us this, but we don't have a calendar anymore. So, I'm asking for an answer. Should I tell them that the leaves of, have stopped being picked up?
So, Miss Shelby, we do have a calendar. It was posted in the calendar. The deadline is December fifteenth.
Okay, it's December fifteenth. I'll let them know. It's December fifteenth in the.
It was posted in the city calendar.
Twenty-three, it was posted in the calendar.
Well, I'm just coming and asking questions so I can tell them. It's December the fifteenth. Okay, the other thing is, I got phone calls about the pumps that's for, the pipes that's busted, and the church over on, uh, what is that? Cherry? No, it's behind Stanford.
Yeah, I know you're talking about.
That pump stopped working during the holidays. Do anyone check when, when it's a holiday? Do they check the pumps every day to see if they working? 'Cause if they checking, then they would know that they not working, and somebody needs, 'cause they, they, the church have lost everything because of the flood. So, that's my two questions. And the other thing about God works our hands for y'all to see about. So that's my two questions and the other thing about God works our hands for y'all to see about them getting the building or whatever. Okay? We got to do a little better for people that's trying to help our citizens help themselves, okay? And it's free. Okay?
Your water.
Pass these out to anyone that needs some food. And she said, tell them to call and make, make, uh, make appointment, they will do the food.
Yeah. Did we address it?
I can pass them down for you.
Jerome. Did, did the pump stop working again? Cause we addressed that in December before we left. What you talking about? Okay. Nothing from the city clerk today? City treasurer, you have anything? Nothing, okay. Mayor and council communication. Councilwoman Richardson.
I'll take it. Just one concern. And I was really concerned about last council meeting. I didn't like the fact that there's no protection there for our people there. Um, when the lady left and Mr. Vivin, he thought he got hit. And I know the citizens get upset. And I know they can't put their hands on anybody. But I just don't like them being open like that at, for that door. Is there any way we can put, um, some kind of division, uh, cliff through, see-through? Um, something there where they can come in, but their backs are protected. That's, that's my concern. I just didn't like, and I know they were angry about whatever. I just didn't like it.
Well, there's more to that story. Well, I'll tell you.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's more to it. I'm sure it's more to it. I, I got it.
There may be a reason for that.
I got it. But, but, you know, they're, they're open there. And, you know, if they're angry and their backs is facing us, you know, I just thought maybe that's something we can consider. I don't know if we already have something in there, Mr. Vivins. Uh, some kind of division, Plexiglas or something that could come up a little bit so you're not exposed so much to angry people. And that, that is, that is a concern of mine. I just didn't like what happened. I know, I know, he, he starts trouble. He does. But. I know. But it's all good. So, but, but that is my, my concern. That's it. That's all I have.
Devil look into camera. Councilwoman Scott. Nothing? Councilwoman Howard?
Um, I do have one thing. Um, I'm not sure if everybody is familiar with, uh, the state and the redistricting. They gotta, uh, what is it? They gotta get three more people. I'm not sure if they did that today. Because the redistricting that they did, they said that was inju, they shouldn't have did it. So hopefully we'll get something soon because for the presidential, hopefully. So stay tuned because they ruled in our favor, which is good, so.
They're doing it, um.
Uh, we'll hear something in the near few, in a couple of days because they do have to replace three that stepped, that resigned, so. Stay tuned to that.
They're doing a computer electorial computer thing. They're going down a list.
Okay.
And they're gonna pick them by a computer.
Okay, okay, okay. Cause I haven't seen the news today.
Yeah, that's what they said on the news today.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bishop, nothing from you? Councilwoman Rutledge?
Um, I did have a question about the traffic light at, um, Middlebelt and Carlisle. Um, it seems to be blinking now at like five o'clock.
In the morning?
No. Five o'clock in the evening. Yep. And so I, I had called and spoken with, um, Jerome about it and he said they, they were gonna fix it, but it's still blinking at like five in the afternoon, five P M. And I was just afraid if something serious might go on there.
That's the captain. Oh, they said they were gonna fix it?
They said, that's what, um, Jerome said, so I just wanted to know, just make sure. Yep. It's blinking, five P M. Dangerous. I will. I, I, you asked, asked for calls, bro.
She gonna run up on you like the other lady did.
I told you he was in trouble. He always in trouble.
Carlisle, mm-hmm. Yep, Middlebelt and Carlisle. That's it, I'm sorry.
Is there a button there to control? And they used to have a pole there, you push it, cause you know, the school was down the street. And they used to be able, the kids used to be able to push the button to stop the traffic. So is that maybe the, what's out of order? We don't, we don't know.
No.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes, um, a couple of things. One, Councilwoman Rutledge, I'm going to forward you the number of Wayne County roads cause I know when it's after hours and can't necessarily reach Mr. Vivins or Mr. Davis right away, I usually call and report it myself and he'll give me a phone, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman, I'm calling Jerome.
I was just letting you know. That way, I always text Jerome and say, this is the tracking number. Uh, but I'm, I'm just forwarding to you, cause it's always good to have, especially when power, whatever goes out. Um.
Can you forward that to everybody, um, Councilman?
Sure. They'll be glad to hear from you guys. I know they love hearing from me. Um, secondly, just regarding the packets, cause I know we kinda got out of that habit before when Councilwoman Rutledge was our city clerk and Councilwoman Richardson was referring to this. We used to have just the actual agenda is one item and then you had an actual packet. And then the agenda would have page numbers behind each item that was listed. And it was easier for us to go to those particular pages, whether it was PDF or in this packet. Um, we, we were briefly discussing it, myself and Councilwoman Richardson, cause I know we were thumbing through papers, trying to find stuff, like we don't know where it's at in the packet, looking for additional info. But that's just cause nothing's actually easily numbered. So we were just asking about a process to streamline that, just to assist, because it's a lot of paper. And even now, when I'm on the computer trying to go through PDFs, I can't just type a page number in anymore and go right to it. Uh, that's not, uh, like anybody's in trouble, but it's just a request, if that can be done. Um, secondly, I had a conversation with trustee Luana Abdi Mitchell earlier today from the Wayne Westland School Board. She wanted to be here, but she couldn't be here tonight, but she's on Zoom. And she was speaking of the different things that she wants to do in conjunction with the city of Inkster. One was just as far as having like our Inkster students or some students in the Wayne Westland schools start coming over particularly to Inkster, touring city halls and seeing what the different processes and procedures are. Although they have one in Westland, but she wants to get them involved right here in Inkster as well. And she also wanted to, um, look at, cause they've been talking about it, talking about it, talking about it, but building up the youth and I guess young adults Parks and Recs Commission. Um, she says she has some information she's going to be willing to share with us in the future, but I just wanted to relay that conversation. And also told her as well, like I've told other, um, school boards, when you have anything that you want to communicate to the city of Inkster, you don't have to wait and figure out when. You can just give it to any one of us and ask us to bring it up at a council meeting. Because we have so many different districts that our kids go to. Sometimes it's too late when the information gets out for us to impose or impact on, positively on whatever the curriculum is going to be. And finally, um, I know on November twentieth, some of you all had heard me state before we took our oath offices about, um, we had a family emergency. Unfortunately, my father passed away on December twenty-seventh. His funeral is forthcoming, um, it's tentatively planned for January thirteenth. And once the details are finalized, I will make sure I share those as best I can. We probably won't be meeting here in city hall before that. Um, so for those who are interested or wanted to share the information, the arrangements will be held by Chapel of the Chimes. So please feel free to call Chapel of the Chimes and/or visit their website for additional details once, once they are available. Um, other than that, that is all I have, Mr. Bear.
Okay. All right. Hope everybody will send a prayer out for Mayor Pro Temp, losing his father. It's always tough, no matter what situation is. So I'm thinking about him and his family. Um, we have a town hall meeting tomorrow at the rec center starts at six o'clock. Uh, feel free to come out and join and ask any type of questions you would like to ask or tell us what you would like us to do. Uh, all the people on council who can make it will be there. We have some department heads there. Um, so you feel free to come and let us know what you think we should be doing and what direction you like the city going. Tomorrow. And finally, I'd just like to say, it's good to be a Michigan Wolverine. Maybe motion to adjourn. Good move, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, man.
Happy birthday to Councilwoman Rutledge.
Rutledge, oh, yeah. She turned twenty-nine.